Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our Tuesday, April 4th, regular meeting of the Mason County Board of County Commissioners. I'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Shelton City Commissioner Kathy McDowell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would please take the roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
And Commissioner District Three, Terry Jeffries.
Here on the phone.
Very good. Welcome, Commissioner. It's good to hear you.
Thank you for allowing me to attend this way.
Absolutely. Item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Kimmelin Wilson and Jean Carrier sent applications for the Board of Equalization Advisory Board, and the Liquor and Cannabis Board sent liquor licenses for Belfair Elementary PTA Meeting Room at 111 Northeast Old Belfair Highway in Belfair, and Salish Cliffs Golf Club, 91 West State Route 108 in Shelton.
Okay, thank you. Item 4.2, we have a news release from the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paula Reeves, Planning Manager. The Mason County Commissioners and Mason County Historic Preservation Commission are pleased to announce that Mason County will be celebrating National Historic Preservation Month in May 2017. The Mason County Historic Preservation Commission works to foster civic and neighborhood pride in the beauty and accomplishments of the past, a sense of identity based on the Mason County history, and to raise community awareness of Mason County history and historic resources. The Mason County Historic Preservation Commission supports National Historic Preservation Month by promoting local historic preservation events during the month of May. Local Mason County organizers who are planning events supporting the history of the people, places, or historic events of Mason County are invited to provide the description, date, time, and location of such events for inclusion in our advertising campaign. If interested in participating, or if there are additional questions, please contact my staff, Michael McSims, at 427-9670, extension 571. The deadline for input is April 10th, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Item five, it's our open forum for citizen input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on issues that are not on today's agenda. So if there are any members of the public today that would wish to address the commission on any issues not on our agenda, please come to the podium. Now would be the time to do that.
My name is Charles Orkman, and I'm a Mason County resident. And my last visit to the Mason County Commission, my parting words were yes, no, maybe. That was a little levity in reference to last November's election. Congratulations, gentlemen. And today, those three words are the possible answers to the question, are county residents being jailed for being poor? I'm poor, I'll take this one. The article is not about Mason County jail. It's about debtors' prison. It's about traffic-related fines being sent to collections preventing drivers, making it more economically infeasible for them to get their driver's license and privileges restated. And this particular article comes very close to home for me. It starts out, you get pulled over for a faulty taillight, and the officer discovers you are driving with a suspended driver's license. It wasn't a taillight, it was a headlight on my motorcycle. The officer was Officer Dean Smith of the Mason County Sheriff's Office Traffic Enforcement Division, pulled me over by the clock tower. He asked me the question, do you know why I pulled you over? And I said, no. He said, your headlights not working. So I did the little bang on the headlight, it came on, and I said, thank you. And that's when he asked me to see my license, and I didn't have one. It was suspended, it was a second offense. The article goes on to say, and I'll leave this newspaper, sorry, it's in kind of ragged condition, but you can read the article, and it's exactly my story. Repeated offenses, I wrote a letter to the judge requesting community service, I got the community service, then homelessness hit, I was unable to complete my community service. When I achieved enough stability in my life to go back and complete the community service, that's when I found out that the debts had been forwarded to collections. So there are 360,000 Washington drivers that are driving unsuspended, have suspended licenses, and they continue to drive, and they continue to cost taxpayers and others a lot of money. So when I prepared today, there were some letters from attorney general of Congress saying, I'll just forward you those papers, if communication is necessary. But there are, there is a Senate Bill 6360 that will be going, the deadline on it is December 31st of this year. I've talked to attorneys from the Northwest Justice Project, and I believe the goal is we're going to create a little bit of case history here in Mason County that can be used to spur this bill, to get it to pass. And that would allow for traffic fines to be brought back to the courts, where they could work with a program to get people out of debt and back behind the wheel in a legal fashion. And so I would like to ask the commission today for their support of this project. It isn't necessarily something that, you know, you deal with on a day-to-day basis, but talking about it, being aware of it, and thinking that we're going to make this move. And we're going to try to bring a little economic relief to citizens of this community, getting back into the thing. So, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Charles. And I'd like to thank you in particular for sharing your story, and the Journal for highlighting this issue. When I worked in the legislature in Olympia, I built a very good relationship with the Office of Civil Legal Aid, who is the sponsor of the Northwest Justice Project. We've been working to get their state director in for a briefing here, and we'll be able to do that once session's over, so that they have a little bit more time. Right now, they're down there fighting for funding in the budget. And that's something that our local representatives have been very supportive of, because of stories like yours. And so I appreciate you bringing that forward, and, great. Absolutely, yeah. So, I appreciate that, and, you know, I look forward to having an opportunity to have the Office of Civil Legal Aid and their lawyers in for a briefing to talk about how we can be more supportive of their efforts, and make more people aware of the services that they provide. Thanks, Charles, yeah. Okay. Any other citizens wishing to speak? Okay. Takes us to item number six, which is the adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes. We have briefing minutes from March 27th, 2017. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes, March 27th, 2017 briefing minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the briefing minutes from March 27th, 2017. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, on today's agenda is the approval of our action agenda. We have 10 items on today's agenda that we will read through. I will save Commissioner Jeffries the having to read through those, and I think Commissioner Netherland and I will split the duties. Commissioner, I will take items 8.1 through 8.5, you'll take 8.6 through 8.10. Once we read through those, we'll entertain questions and discussion, and then move on from there. Item 8.1, approval to have the chair sign the Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement Annual Update and Accomplishment Report for the reporting period from May 1st, 2015 through April 30th, 2016. Item 8.2, approval to authorize the county engineer to sign Amendment Number 1 to the Reciprocal Maintenance Agreement between Wastot and Mason County. The amendment updates the performance period, contact information, and reimbursement payment obligations. Item 8.3, approval to authorize the Utilities and Wastewater Management Division to purchase the HACH 1720E turbidometers for the North Bay Water Reclamation Facility. Item 8.4, approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items for $150 and utilities for $248.83, for a total of $398.83, as recommended by the Veteran's Service Office. Item 8.5, approval of the following staff changes in the Assessors' Office. Reestablish Appraiser 1, 2, or 3, Budget Line 001.000.000.020.514.24.510110.000.00. The funding from the clerk budget line will be transferred to the reestablished Appraiser Budget Line, and there will be no additional funding.
Commissioner, before I go forward, I think you missed the zero. Item number 8.6, approval of warrants. Claims Clearing Fund warrants number 8047334 through 8047649, the amount of $1,277,367.72. Direct Deposit Fund warrants number 39446 through 39832, for the amount of $661,370.97. Salary Claiming Fund warrants number 7002649 through 7002677, for the amount of $479,043.33, for a grand total of $2,417,779.2. Item number 8.7, approval to advertise for bids for the Sand Hill Park Fields 1 and 2 renovations. Project funded in part, but with recreation and conservation funding, RCO grant, bids will be received until April 27th, 2017, 1:00 p.m. Item number 8.8, approval to set a hearing on April 25th, 2017, at 6:30 p.m., to amend the Development Code for the Shelton Urban Growth Area, Chapter 17.07, to remove the prohibition of self-storage from the industrial zoning district. Item number 8.9, approval to set a hearing on April 25th, 2017, at 6:30 p.m., to consider the proposed correction to the ordinance amending Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 17.12, Commercial Zoning Districts in Allen, UGA, Article 1 Village Commercial Districts, Section 17.12.110, Purpose, Section 17.12.120, Permitted Uses, and Section 17.12.160, Additional Development Design Criteria. Item number 8.10, approval of the resolution to amend the Mason County Personnel Policy, Chapter 13, to include assignment of county vehicles for take-home and operational considerations.
Okay, very good. At this time, is there, are there any items that a commissioner or a member of the public would like to have removed for a separate vote or conversation? So I would like to remove item 8.10 from today's agenda and table it until next week's meeting, which would be April 12th? Is that correct? My calendar. We're still on March. Okay. April 11th, okay, perfect. Reason being, we've made some changes to that policy, and staff, I think, would like to have additional time to update the wording and have that be accurately reflected before we vote on it.
Commissioner, can I go ahead and then remove it from the action agenda, then we'll take a separate vote and table it at that time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I will request the removal of 8.10.
Okay, very good.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we remove item 8.10 from today's action agenda and table it until April 11th. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. With that, I would entertain any conversation on items 8.1 through 8.9. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve today's action agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda, 8.1 through 8.9, since we have removed 8.10.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve items 8.1 through 8.9, with the removal of item 8.10 on today's action agenda. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Takes us to item number nine, Other Businesses. An opportunity for department heads and other elected officials to address the commission. Jeff?
Jeff Rabble, Facilities, Parks and Trails Manager. I have a news release that I'd like to read. The Board of County Commissioners would like to extend an invitation to the public to celebrate the opening of the recently renovated baseball fields at MCRNA, Mason County's recreation area, and this regards to Fields 6 and 7, located at 2100 East Johns Prairie Road. Mason County received a $285,000 grant for the renovation project from the Washington State's Recreation and Conservation Office through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program/Local Parks. The decision, or the dedication is scheduled for Thursday, April 13th, at 4:00 p.m. at MCRNA. A short dedication ceremony will be conducted, and refreshments and snacks will be available. If you have any questions about the MCRNA baseball field dedication, please contact Ann Vois at Mason County's Parks at 360-427-9670, at extension 535.
Great, thanks.
And there won't be that many snacks, there'll be a lot of kids, but, and so, if you want snacks and refreshments, you're gonna have to make a move.
Do we have to, are we gonna give the Parks Director, the Parks and Facilities Director a Gatorade bath for seeing this?
Um, no. I'm not aware of that. That's supposed to be a sneak attack.
Surprise.
Yeah. Now that I know.
Okay, any other comments from department heads or elected officials? Commissioner McDowell?
Any comments for me?
Yeah.
I'm...
Make it official.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't planning to say anything, but this is exciting for the upgrades, the new parks out there. My husband's a baseball umpire, and he just loves nice parks to umpire in. And hopefully, we'll be having the Little League in 2018, the area Little League will be playing out there, hopefully. Have you heard anything about that? No. Oh, well, I'll tell you, I'll inform you. Anyway, it's exciting to see a field that started with just one or two fields bloom into what it is now, and the remodeling of them and keeping them up. So, baseball is a big thing here, and soccer, and all that stuff, and it keeps our kids healthy, and parents, you know, engaged in family things. So anyway, kudos to you guys for doing that. It's beautiful out there. Thank you. Yeah, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, if there's nobody else that's speaking, it has been our past history and practice that we take the new person, when we have extra time that we need to kill before, because we cannot start our hearings until 9:30 exactly. Our historic practice is that we put them on the spot, we've done it to the press, we've done it to everybody else that's come in, and we have a new employee, I think this would be a great opportunity for her to come up, introduce herself, and tell us all about her.
Sure, Paula. You did so well with the press release, that was kind of a...
I wasn't really ready for this, but I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. I have come most recently from the city of Tumwater as their planning manager, and prior spent 18 years with Washington State Department of Transportation managing a unit called Community Design, so doing a lot of local projects in cities and counties across the state. I currently serve as the Washington State Chapter President for the American Planning Association, and my term is concluding at the end of 2017. It's been a four-year engagement, so I've met a lot of planners and others serving as my counterparts across Washington, and we'll look forward to sort of drawing from their experiences as we go forward. I'm very much looking forward to helping you all complete your comprehensive plan update, and beginning to get a work plan together for that. I think we have a great staff in planning and community services, and really pleased to work with Dave Windham and you all. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity, and please do direct questions about planning to us, and we'll see what we can do. Do you guys have any questions for me, or anything that you think that we should be focusing on?
Mr. Chair, is that me?
Sure, please.
Paula, welcome. You're very much needed here, and we appreciate your urban planning experience, and I think that's where we probably need your expertise the most. I think all three commissioners, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, agree that we need to encourage economic development in whatever capacity we have, and that mostly is around our infrastructure availability and our land use planning. And so when you bring to the table your experience with urban planning, especially when I think about the unincorporated Shelton Urban Growth Area, and the Belfair and Allen Urban Growth Areas, we hope that you can bring to the table some new, fresh ideas that help encourage development in those areas, to encourage the type of vibrant communities we want to have here, and then be able to maintain our rural lifestyle and outside of those urban growth areas. So welcome aboard, and we look forward to using your experience.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have anything that you're hoping to accomplish while you're here?
I do enjoy the code compliance work. I know that a lot of planners don't, but I do enjoy that, and I do see, you know, a really budding grassroots effort here that is exciting to me, so I'd like to support that. I'm a volunteer mediator in Thurston County, so I'd like to, you know, bring some of those skills to the table here. I think there's some good opportunities there. So, you know, and again, just looking forward to working on the comprehensive plan with you all, getting to know the county much, much better. Beautiful, beautiful place. I think probably the most beautiful county in the state, so, very exciting.
Mark Gibby.
Yeah.
Very good, Paula, thanks so much, I appreciate everything. It's your third week, you're in your third...
I am in my third week.
Yeah, well, very good, we're very happy to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, well, as Commissioner Netherland mentioned earlier, we can't begin our public hearing until 9:30, so if it's, I'd like to skip to item 11, which is our board reports and calendar. I will, I'll start that. I'll be out of town the rest of this week, through the weekend, and back here on Monday for briefings, and our meeting on Tuesday. If Commissioner Netherland would like to go through his calendar, and then we'll have Commissioner Jeffries.
Last week, I did meet with Commissioner Wolf from Kitsap County, attended an awards celebration and ceremony at the Belfair Elementary. I attended an event for Axel Stranglejohn, who's the commissioner of the Port of Bremerton, while there I ended up having some great conversations with the other port commissioners, as well as the mayor of Bremerton, and some council members from Bremerton as well, and from Port Orchard. We had our Audit Committee meeting, we had a meeting with Lisa Anderson from DNR, West Sound Alliance meeting, briefings, and then the Port of Allen meeting last night. This next week, soon as this meeting's over, I'll be meeting with the city manager, I'll be attending the Noxious Weed Board. I may, you won't be there, so I don't think we'll have an issue, I may attend the Wasack Ledge reception. Mason Transit Authority Policy Meeting, Housing Authority Meeting, Chamber of Commerce Breakfast Builder Meeting that they have, the Allen Community Association, I'll also be meeting with Scott Cooper of the Port of Allen. Let's see, I have a food and fellowship meeting, I have the briefings, and then a finance committee meeting, and that brings us back to our regular meetings on Tuesday.
Commissioner Jeffries?
Yeah, so, I'll say I can go back a couple weeks now, the 23rd and 24th, I was in Spokane for the Transportation Improvement Board meeting, and then did some great tours of the Spokane projects that are going on there. Then went to Washington DC for the National Workforce Development Council meeting, conference that was very informative, and the numbers are staggering regarding the number of unfilled jobs nationwide. What I found was that our Workforce Development Council, as well as our EDC, do have now access to some databases that show the job opportunities that are in our region. There was an emphasis by the hospitality and retail businesses, industries, to workforce development, saying we are your entry gate for first-time jobs with plenty of growth opportunities, and they had a lot of charts and graphs and information regarding how one could go into these entry-level positions, especially our youth, what we call our out-of-work, out-of-school youth, which you know, they moniker it as opportunity youth. There is career ladder, there are career ladders in these fields that people tend to overlook. And so the retail and hospitality industry is especially reaching out to Workforce Development Councils to partner with for career pathways in those fields, because there's, I think the number was something like 500,000 unfilled positions right now, with that number growing, because the number of hotel rooms that are being added to the stock nationwide is something on around a million a year, which is amazing to even think about. I'm attending the Mason Transit Authority Finance Committee meeting, we'll have some pretty tough discussions regarding the financial position of the county in our future MTE meetings, or the agency, I'm sorry, in our future meetings, having to do with our needing to write off, to depreciate some of the capital assets, and that will also inform what we may or may not want to do, but with future capital assets. I had hosted a meeting in Mason County of the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council Conference in the government, and then I am in Seattle right now at the National Council for Behavioral Health. It's 6,000 people, practitioners and board members, and service providers throughout the United States, working on both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And the focus of this conference is on innovation, and there are some pretty incredible innovations being discussed regarding how to, of all, I think only about 10% of the people diagnosed with mental health disorder are actually getting treatment, and so there's a lot of discussion and examples of how like, we can use technology, like our iPhones even, to be able to expand our treatment outreach to folks who need the help. There's also some emphasis on the, on key areas that in, the interface between mental health and our criminal justice systems, with a lot of great best practices that I want to be able to bring back to share with, for us to consider. Spoke to a lot of folks involved in therapeutic courts about where those might be going in the future, and how we can expand the opportunity to make those more useful. And then I will come back for some meetings with the Towne Corian Council representatives, and be back for briefings on Monday.
Very good, Commissioner, I appreciate that. And I wanted to, just, I guess, as an aside, the Thurston-Mason-Louis area agency on aging meeting that I attend for you went very well. I actually ended up having to chair that meeting, so I'll bill you twice for it. But no, it was a good opportunity to meet with folks from Louis and Thurston County, so I appreciated the opportunity to represent Mason County down there, and wish you all the best on that committee as well.
Thank you for stepping up, yeah, we have some work ahead of us, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, but it definitely feels like, it definitely feels like everybody is ready to move forward, so, which is good.
Good.
Commissioner?
Commissioner, on that note, on how many jobs that we have available at the EDC... Commissioner, on that note, on how many jobs that we have available at the EDC retreat that we had, there was some really sad news. When you're talking to certain employers around here that they do have quite a few jobs that are available, including Sierra Pacific, the problem that they found was not that there was a lack of applicants, and it wasn't even as much the can't pass the drug test, which we all know that's a big issue out here as well, but they were having a hard time finding anybody that had three to six months of constant work history, right before applying for the job. And you can imagine how sad that is when they're trying to hire people and they can't get people that have a working record of actually attending a job for any length of time.
Right, right. I understand that. They did talk a little bit, now granted, we're talking in larger numbers and larger markets at these national conferences, that was one of my frustrations, there wasn't a lot of focus on rural areas, but the employers themselves that were speaking were showing that they're coming to the understanding that the typical prerequisites for jobs, and even a six-month, you know, maybe this is too little, but even the six-month work experience is maybe something that they need to address in a more proactive way, in that the skill training, even the soft skills training, has to come from them, whereas we expect, employers expect them to come to the workplace with those skills, but that there's also the opportunity of internships and utilizing our high schools and even gravity for the folks who have gotten, who didn't, who dropped out of high school, to use those areas in a more direct way for the types of skills that would, that translate into, or not translate, but bring them into the entry level, and then the training happens in the workplace. There's some flexible funding in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act around paid internships, and that might be the place to go, because when you don't have maybe a home environment where the support and the work ethic is taught, where are they gonna get that? So it has to come from some other area, and I think that tends to be an issue maybe in our community. I don't know closely enough to be able to tell you that for sure, it's very anecdotal.
Very good, well, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, we've passed the 9:30 mark, so I would like to begin our public hearing. Item ten point one, public hearing to inform citizens of the availability of funds and eligible uses of the 2017 Public Services Community Development Block Grant, PS-CDBG, and receive comments on proposed activities specifically funding the Community Action Council of Louis, Mason, and Thurston Counties, as well as receiving comments on the 2016 program. This time, I'd like to invite Frank.
Commissioners, Mason County partners with Lewis County in coordination with the Community Action Council on an annual basis to apply for, receive, provide services through a public service community development block grant administered by the Washington State Department of Commerce. In 2016, as with subsequent years, the funding usually is around about $100,000 and has been used to provide service referrals for a minimum of 6,000 individuals in Mason and Lewis Counties with a minimum of 3,060 must-need HUD's 51% income qualification, as well as provide direct services and referrals for a minimum of 300 children victims. This year's allotment is $102,798. The hearing will solicit public input on proposed activities and services to be provided, as well as comments on current programming. I would like to make a motion, to have, to make a motion to approve the submission of the CDBG application, sign the resolution authorizing the submission, and certifying the county's compliance with the CDBG requirements, and authorizing myself, Frank Pinter, Support Services Director, to act as the chief administration official in the CDBG program grant.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any questions from the Commission for Frank at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the disclosure that I do serve on board of the Community Action Council.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no questions, at this time, I would like to invite the public to comment on this. If you would like to make a comment on item ten point one, you can please approach the podium, state your name, and make your comments. Okay, hearing no public comment on this, I would entertain a motion from the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the submission of the CDBG application, sign resolution authorizing the submission and certifying the county's compliance with the CDBG requirements, and authorizing Frank Pinter, Support Services Director, to act as the chief administration officer for the CDBG program.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the submission of the CDBG application, sign the resolution authorizing the submission and certifying the county's compliance with CDBG requirements, and authorizing Frank Pinter, Support Services Director, to act as the chief administration official for the CDBG program. Are there any other further discussion at this time?
I just wanted to share that I'm very happy that Mason County has stepped in to be the partner with the Community Action Council in this work, and that, and I think that it set the stage for some future discussion and hopeful collaboration regarding increased affordable housing in Mason County as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, item 12 is adjourned, but I'm gonna exercise just a point of personal privilege at this opportunity, and I'd just like to tip my hat to the Gonzaga basketball team, fantastic run for them this year in the tournament. I once again did not pick them to go all the way, and that's unfortunate for me in my bracket, but just, I think, a great opportunity to showcase our state and Spokane in particular and a great university, and they went toe-to-toe with basketball's elite, and so it was fun celebrating their success this March, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, would you like to introduce your family here?
Oh, sure. Well, actually, the, so, as Commissioner Netherland noted, my wife Catherine is here in the audience today, also our two exchange students that have been with us since August, Monica and Hannah. Monica and Hannah both attend North Mason Schools, North Mason High School, Monica is a senior there and Hannah is a sophomore, and so we're just happy to have, happy to have them here with me today, get to see what I do, work, and so, thanks for coming down today and enjoying spring break by getting up early and coming here.
I understand some better.
Hello, Catherine.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Chair, I want to echo your congratulations to Gonzaga, that is a former alma mater of mine, so it was with great pride that I got to watch them last night, unfortunately, they didn't bring home the full prize, but the boost that that's done to that school's ability to expand their educational offerings through a sports program is pretty amazing, but very proud of my bags.
Yeah, no, absolutely, it was a fantastic run for them. So, and then I'll just, I'll just kind of end by saying that, so, in a couple of weeks, their full group of exchange students are gonna be visiting us here for a meeting.
Wonderful.
So, we'll look forward to having a group of kids here from Mason and Kitsap, and I think they have one student from Thurston County that's part of their group, so, we'll see them here in a couple of weeks, too.
Well, welcome, welcome, guys.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
We are adjourned. Have a good week, everybody.
Thank you.